Call me in order, please join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections? Or discussion? During none? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carries. Agenda? Anything to add?
Would approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carries. Okay, well first we have Mr. Frith out back there. Afternoon.
Afternoon. All of you should have got the packet with the petitions that were circulated in South Manyelawken and the letters that I sent to Sarah Paylon at Sarah. Sarah Paylon at the DOT and I also sent a copy of the petitions to the engineers that designed this whole project for the state. And the reason that I got involved, most of this project runs through South Manyelawken Township. From the rest area clearing into quality welding. For Schmaltz's, who Schmaltz is quality welding. That's all in South Manyelawken Township. So I get a lot of feedback from the area people, the businesses along there, the residents, the farmers. And they kept asking me what we could do and said, well, there's not a lot we can do except make them know our feelings and bring it to them. So I thought, what better way than to get a petition, which is, doesn't have any legal basis, but it tells them how many people in that area are dissatisfied with the idea of putting these J turns in. There was two public meetings and they were really kind of borderly attended, but they were in the winter time. And public meetings always draw a lot unless people are really interested in it. And there wasn't a lot of guys at the time, so they were poorly attended. But during those meetings, these guys, the engineers, they're from Utah and Des Moines, Iowa. And I kept telling them, this is a different country up here because of the winters that we have. And we're not a big city, but they couldn't get that through their head. And they kept pushing this J turns thing. And after these meetings were over and started circulating amongst the general population that what the plan was, then people started coming to me and expressing their feelings of dissatisfaction with this. So we put out a petition of five different spots. Couple businesses, a couple residents. And within two weeks, we got this many signatures. I wanted to get it going as quickly as I could once we decided to do that. So I just waited for two weeks, took whatever signatures we had and made the copies, set them around. Well, it's been another couple of weeks now since I sent these in. May, May third, yeah, May third when I sent these in. I'm sure that we could have gotten another couple hundred signatures real easy, but the first 200 came pretty fast. Now, I know that you guys had some kind of a meeting with the DOT a while back. Yeah, I'm not sure what transpired. Jeff filled me in a little bit on it. But these kind of things, if, you know, this project is in 2024 and if you just gotta forget about it for a little while, pretty soon everybody forgets about it. So the purpose of me coming to you guys is to remind you that this many people don't want those J turns out there. And I don't know what we as a county can do about it. We're trying our darndest as a township to do what we can and protect everybody's attention to what our feelings really are. So that's the purpose of me being here.
Appreciate you coming in.
Anybody have any questions about whether we're opposed to it? Do you all understand the J turns concept?
One question, Kevin, are you just opposed because there's so many? I see a point to making this.
Well, I don't know how many J turns have got planned. They told me that there was going to be like a half a dozen of them.
I think that's how they presented it to us, two and a half of them.
That's a pretty long stretch. What really got there gained here, but I don't know if they're all usable or if that's what the plan is or not, I'm not sure. But this is their original map that they had that held us. Yeah, it doesn't show it as good on there as some of the later maps that they had. There's personal opposition to it amongst citizens because they drive that thing every day. So every time that they want to go to Devil's Lake, they've got to go all down the highway, head towards Grand Porch, take a U-turn and go back. If they drive it four or five times a day, it gets aggravated. So I can understand that. That isn't such a big deal. The ones that were the most adamant about it were the people with farm machinery that utilize the corridor. When you're pulling a big air seater with a tank and stuff behind it, it gets a little problematic no matter where you're at. One of the guys, I stopped into Otter Tail out there and talked with one of the fellows, got a couple of signatures in. He said, I don't know how in the hell we're going to make that turn safely with a 75-foot pole on the back. He said, this has got to be a little nerve wracking for us. He said, if there's traffic coming, he said, we're going to have to sit there alongside the highway in that J turn thing until nobody's coming the other way and then make it. He said, they might make the intersection big enough to make the turn, but he said, we're going to have to swing out way farther than that. And then I did quite a bit of driving for Dakota Patrol in last year. I'm hauling big propane tanks and I think you guys are familiar with Dakota Patrol and they came up here. Okay. I had one tank on the back and it was, the trailer was longer than the tank, but the tank was 75 feet long. And to make that turn into one of those places, to make a Louie like that, you'd never make it. You'd be running over the curb on the left. They'd have to really make it huge. And then of course, if any of you ventured out that way this winter. And so those intersections were like, we had to take a run a lot of the times to get through them. They just don't get them clean the way they should. I know they aren't going to happen the same day as the summer. So I don't know either.
Now, what are you gonna, I see the same concern as, when are they going to pull the poles around there when they start snapping and that? The whole of that snow time, you know?
They were going to meet with us again this summer, right?
Yeah. We expressed pretty much, pretty much what you have to them when we visited with them previously. You know, farm equipment, obviously, any kind of long taking, pulling stuff out of High Plains when they've got to go back and forth, obviously, when they got a combine on or something. And they listened to us. I don't know if we are going to make any progress, but at least they sat and listened to us. They did express that they would like to meet with us again, but in a smaller form. So I've talked with Chad Warren, who was one of the project guys who was here. And we'd like to get something together with the township, with people that live all along the run there. You know, probably maybe a dozen people total, something like that, so that you can face to face express your concerns and get them to them. And then, like I said, I don't know if we'll necessarily make any progress, but it can't hurt to try to get that accomplished.
Absolutely. Those are the same people that fanfunted to these early meetings that didn't show up. But, you know, residents don't really, it doesn't really concern them, whatever happens.
Yeah.
And then they're going to, what? The big change.
Yeah, my thought was if, you know, I'm kind of coordinating it to a point as if we could get the township officers, you know, maybe some of the farmers along the run, Ackerman, since he's got his resort out there. Swetseth from High Plains, you know, kind of that group of people, that'll be probably a dozen of us or so. And we can really explain, you guys will have the time and the chance to really hear what your concerns are.
Like the Poly Company, NODAC.
Yeah, NODAC, or NODAC, Otter Tail.
They're all long here and I think they'd be very.
Yeah, they'd be, no, that'd be good.
I got Warren's number right here.
Hey, when that does start.
You see, to listen to our concerns.
When that does start to come forward, if you contact me, I can contact those really concerned people out there in the businesses. I can run that hard for you.
Okay, well, that'd be fantastic. I'm trying to coordinate something for probably middle of June timeframe area. So I'll find a date that works with the people from Bismarck to come up. And then I'll visit with you and we can try to get something coordinated so we can get you guys face to face with them.
Yeah, excellent. This year, it's probably better to edge it towards the end of June.
Yeah, I know. My goal, Kevin, was to try to do it in late April, early May, and then the time just got away from me.
We don't want to miss any of the summer days though.
Yeah.
They're pretty busy.
Yeah, we'll shoot probably closer to the end of June before it's open.
Yeah, that'd be excellent. They'll probably listen a whole lot more to people from the township than they will to anybody because those are the people that are utilizing.
Well, that was kind of our thought here when we visited with them initially and kind of came up with the idea of a second meeting was if the people along that route, if we can keep it contained to a small amount of people, but the ones that are going to use it consistently and have concerns with it, that's going to get a lot more across to them than a big public meeting with 100 people there.
Oh, absolutely.
So I'll be in contact with you then and Jeff will work with you.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin, if I could. The primary concern for DOT and how the engineers are explaining this is, you know, they want to ensure safety through this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we all, that's the primary concern. And that's one of the reasons why the commission years back approached them to make some changes in that corridor. They seem convinced on the J turns are the best way to do that. I think the township, I think it would be beneficial if they had different ideas on how to improve safety through that corridor to, you know, other than the J turns. You know, have options for DOTs coming forward. And so maybe the engineers can take a look at that and say, yeah, that may be a good idea if we implement that idea instead of the J turns. I think some of those ideas would be very beneficial. I think we expressed those ideas to them when we discussed it with them here and I think.
Well, we talked speed reductions, we talked maybe on ramp, off ramp, on ramp type situations where you'd have some time to speed up to get onto the lane. We talked additional frontage roads, so maybe you could reduce access points, but you could put some frontage roads in so people would still have the opportunity to drive the way they wanted, but there'd just be less spots to cross the highway, you know, that kind of an idea, so.
There are excessive.
Oh, yeah.
Roads going on to the highway out there and someone could be eliminated. It might mean somebody in a subdivision driving 300 feet down, you know, on the highway, which isn't a big problem really.
Yeah, and I think.
They align up to those ones that hit a 45.
Yeah, and they're going to realign those. I think that's an automatic in the project. So, I mean, we've expressed a lot of the same concerns and concepts with them too. And they seemed as though at least they were listening.
They were receptive.
Yeah, they were receptive to it. I don't know if it's going to make any difference, but at least they were willing to listen.
Certainly, we certainly hope so. I think that's the mission of everybody locally anyway. Is improve, improve safety, but not necessarily with J turns.
I agree with Jeff. I think that if you're going to try to get them convinced, it's got to come back with how you're going to fix it by safety. You know, I think that's part of the reason why they're trying to do this is for safety. But like I said, you get rid of some of the getting onto the highway, there's a lot less. You're going to increase a lot more safety, you know?
Agreed. Now, so working together, I think we can work some time.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
I'll give you a call at some point. Very good, very good. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. You bet. Okay, we're going to go from one Kevin to another Kevin. Afternoon, Kevin.
Yes. All right, first, road updates. Visible. We probably have up to 10 now washouts that we have to fix on our own system. And there's, I have no idea on my end township, but I would guess up to 40 of washouts. So it's big. It's probably bigger than it was in 11 as far as culvert washouts. And I think we need to hope for a disaster to get help to pay for some of them. A lot of these aren't high dollar ones, but it's still a matter of they're going to add up fast.
Especially if we have to replace the culvert, right? Are we even going to have enough culverts to do it?
Yeah, I ordered like three semi loads. I think they're here already, so.
I mean, every time we drop, just, right, what's the standard for running across a township road now? Probably 24-inch in most places?
Yeah, it's kind of an unwritten rule. If it's just equalizing water, it's an 18, but if there's actually water flowing, then they go to 24.
Most of those places that are washed out are 24, so every time we're going to drop a 24 larger inch culvert, we're talking, what, three, four thousand bucks just to get across the road on a culvert, I'm sure.
Yeah, pretty close, but they have to get it installed.
Yeah, so 40 washout spots, 40 culverts, eh, it's a little 150.
And some would be a little bit more because of gravel too.
Yeah, gravel cost and the time the guys put in.
But we don't have enough labor to try to rent exactly that along, do some of them ourselves?
I did, I did talk to Iron Knight about Brett and one of theirs. And our culvert center showed up in time, so we had, we canceled it. But they, they have got two of them there that we could get to hit. I think we've only got one site where we're going to need more reach. We've got our back over, but it won't, some of them, this one's 40, 45 feet wide, wide open space. And we just can't get to the other side, is the one we got. And I sent mostly an email that said that I ordered some culverts for Ramsey 10 and Ramsey 9. And the way that turns out, those are just going to be temporary ones because if there gets to be a federal disaster to help pay for our federal aid roads, even doesn't pay for our federal aid roads. But normally, there's a federal disaster, get them turned, ER sites, emergency relief sites. And if we do those, they have to have hydraulic studies, like, you know, what we do for our bridges. And every one of these, we got three of them. Nine on nine by Derek, on four by Fridges, and on nine, or 10 by Garski. And all four, all three of them are going to have four times the size culvert tunnel. Which is going to be a shocker for the people downstream. So we'll be able to save the culverts that we do put in, but typically that doesn't happen until these ER sites don't get approved until early fall. So they end up being a next year project.
You know, we can't afford to not get the roads back open after six months.
So that's why we're going to put these temporary ones in for now. And if we get the disaster, then it'll be re used most of the year, but at least it'll be federally paid for then.
Light up on 10, what are you, temporary? How much are you going to put in on that?
Three, we're going to put three, three footers in there.
Smooth inside?
No, they'll be just. And then we'll be able to reuse those. With the site on nine, just doing preliminary assessment on it is going to take three of those 36-inch culverts. So theoretically, we'll be able to use them on that site.
These ones are going to temporarily put in there, they're going to be here next spring and be in use, right? There's no way we're going to change them again this fall. We won't get that done.
I would say no. I don't think we'll be able to get the money quick enough. We have to get an engineering firm and we have to solicit reviews and we have to interview and advertise and go through all those hoops. So that's why they generally say it's going to take till like spring to get anything done. I mean, it's just the main hoops you have to jump through. So what were, what I ordered for this, I don't remember how much it was, I don't know. Anyway, those are going to be just temporary now, but they're actually the same size as what's in there today. So it's not downsizing, it's not upsizing. So for next spring will be.
Soon to be the same situation we are now next spring. Like 10 and four, do you think the water's going to go all the way past the road? I mean, basically dry up on like the north side of 10 and the east side on four?
It's inside the banks now. I don't know if they'll dry up, but it's going out.
It'll be going out like that. So it'd be at a point here, probably not for long, we'll be able to work on these culverts.
Right, right.
Without dry water.
Yeah, in fact, you can see the culverts down on all of them.
You can't.
The water's down that part. Yeah, still pretty good flow though, right? Yeah, it's still, the pipes are still handling full water, but you know, there's probably a two to three foot dirt on top of all of it. So it's gone out that much. We were supposed to have the culverts by Monday, yesterday, but they didn't show up yet, so. But, you know, they're supposed to be here soon, but.
Are they going to rely on any help? I mean, as far as contractors?
We can't even get contractors because the townships are all in the same boat, yeah. And you almost kind of let them, help them too, you know?
If they get out, you know, all these townships are putting in for this, these grants on these roads, if they get that, you ain't going to find a contractor for three years.
Honestly, you know, we've got extra trucks. We can hire part-time drivers, but now it's even harder to find part-time drivers. I'm sure you're all aware, CDLS. So we'll see how that goes. And as part of that, I did hire a part-time help, one Nick that's going to help us mow. But if we need him to drive a truck, we'll have one more truck to do that. So just so you know, I did hire a part-time employee for this summer. He's got a CDL and everything, so. Now, it's going to be a steady report to you because it's going to be a moving target all summer long or at least for the next couple of months. I mean, things are going to happen fast, so there's going to be times of, I'll be doing stuff with about $2,000 limit thing.
Like case four, nine and 10, is there roads, alternative routes for people to use that aren't too bad?
Yeah, you know, those, they don't get them big heavy loads on, but the car traffic, pickup traffic, they're fine for that. But nobody's really home bringing it either, so we're, we're busting our butts to get ours opened again. We started on Fridges. We probably got that one half filled by on four, the pavement.
Okay.
That's probably half full. Today, we'll be able to work on it tomorrow. So it'll be three for us full and then rain again, so we'll see where we go from there, but.
Which, which culvert blew up there? I didn't even, I haven't driven up there to look at it because they just opened three the other day, so it didn't even have a way to get north.
North from where the box hole was.
North of the bridge, yeah.
It wasn't the actual bridge? I thought it was the bridge.
It's like a 60-inch arch.
Oh, I know where you're, yeah, okay, where it crosses over on the, yeah.
Yep, that one.
There's a lot of water moved through that area.
And that hole was probably 40, close to 40 feet wide and five, six foot deep. So, I mean, it takes a massive amount of material and a load of material on. And it's just, everybody that's fixing holes is fighting the same battle right now. And of course, we have to use certified pits in order to get money federal dollars. So we got to either get the pit certified in advance or use certain pits. Just another hoop we got to jump through. If we don't use the certified pit, they won't.
Can't get repaid on the film, huh?
I think.
You got one up close to there?
No.
No, it's on three down by Donnie Olson, so it's not far.
It's not a worry, but that's 20 miles an hour trip at least.
Yeah.
I could jump up a little.
So we're struggling to find pits also. Like I said, it's a moving target and it's going to report, reports at the early meeting, just to try and keep up with them.
With sober's not in business any longer, is there any, has anybody filled in that gap?
Not yet, other than like Greg Close or Gowan, you know? Close has stepped up and taken on a few of the jobs. And of course, that work depends on his work schedule, you know? He's got a lot of trucks and a lot of drivers. With these holes, you almost have to have end dumps until you get a lane across. You know, you can't dump a side dump until you've got a lane across. A belly dump is practically worthless. So you almost need the end dump trucks to fill the holes.
Creating a lot of problems.
Yes. You know, like in 2010, we had a lot of these washouts, but they only washed out the gravel, you know? And you could still drive across it with a belly dump trailer or whatever, where these are big, big holes in the ground. Huge holes in the ground.
Where's the pit up at 10? How far away is that? That you can haul in there, certified pit?
Yeah, still, still, we've got the one by, by Olson's again, but then there's one by, I'll forget the last name. A little bit further west.
So you get haul in clay and then the battle or?
Yeah, just because there's so much.
Yeah, because you said there's, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, it's not just fill the hole either, it's fill them pack and fill and pack and fill and pack and do it right. It takes time.
Build a head wall across the end and then either build another head wall, pump the water or else just keep forcing the water out, you know? Those are the two choices you got.
Yeah, on top of the fact you guys have all the other work you needed to do.
Right, we didn't get any crack seal done, you know? I'm really thinking about not doing any bridges this year because we're so far behind. We were going to tear out three bridges this year and that would have been the end of them, but I think we'll make it safe until next year.
They're in pretty good shape. I mean, they're all.
Well, the positive of those is they're not highly, we're down to the ones that aren't very highly traveled or are not traveled at all. So if we, you know, we've got to skip those to make sure we get the traveling roads open, that's the way to go.
And it's all starting to show up again, I'm sure everywhere, so we'll have to do something with, you know, stop and do something with those also, so.
Well, you know you're going to start here and, you know, phone calls left and right on the bleeding.
Well, it's already started.
Always do that.
We're a month behind on that, you know? So that's why I say, that's a different proof. That's like six different guys that are helping with the roads. So that helps a little. We're not pulling them off to help us yet.
No?
No, I don't know because I know the roads are in rough shape right now.
It's just, it's like trying to eat the elephant, just one bite at a time. Can't look at the whole thing. You just got to figure one day at a time. Just keep making progress.
Just hoping we'll get through four and train.
Yeah.
We need to ask the state, will there be an emergency on those roads? So we can access the federal dollars, you know, the federal's come.
Correct, yes. He was asking, do we have a state of emergency? Now, we declared our emergency, but we still have to wait for the presidential disaster declaration to occur. If it does occur, otherwise our declaration is, we can access local dollars that we have stored away. But other than that, we, there's no federal dollars to back it up until there's presidential disaster declaration to grow FEMA dollars.
The state is really anticipating, because we got all the flooding on the river and all the.
Well, the governor hasn't done one yet either, but I think he's waiting for the disaster declaration to be.
All power lines on west, they qualify for FEMA.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how, it can't be. With what we've had this spring.
Well, I thought the governor declared one, but.
He must have missed it.
But it's, you know, he coming up quick with trying to assess everything and our water isn't going to be down yet. So, because it was a winter disaster one, right? And he's kind of incorporating everything into one. But I think it was a short turnaround and trying to.
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure he did because some of the cattle farmers are going to get some help already on the west.
That could be a different one.
And that goes along with the presidential also, so they're probably anticipating or something.
Trying to tie in some different disasters all into one.
Yeah, and there's, there's different disaster declarations too, because like USDA can release CCC dollars without a presidential disaster declaration. I think they've already done that for some of the cattle ranchers and it's, there's different avenues, but. There's different avenues, but it's just plain and simple, but a really, really tough spring for a lot of different people.
Once in a while, we do see the federal disaster without a FEMA disaster too, so we can get that, but it's just a lot easier when there is a FEMA disaster.
Okay.
All right.
Keep, keep us informed as we go, I guess.
We'll do it. Uh, we need to order a new chain and sprockets for our big sand spreader, and that's gonna cost three thousand twelve dollars and forty seven cents. Motion to approve that expenditure.
Okay.
Move to the second.
A second.
We have a motion in a second to approve, uh, ordering chain and sprockets for the sand spreader, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries.
And then, uh, Marco, Talos, and Lonny, the seniors are, are building a subdivision or something of that sort, just east of Devil's Lake here on the north side. Um, so they wanna put an approach in there, uh, it's just about, oh, six, seven hundred feet. West of the house, the apartment that's there, so, and I don't see any problem with it, so they've filled out their paperwork, so.
It's gonna be south side of the road?
North.
North side of the road, oh, in the, in the pasture out there.
Northwest of Chuck Centers.
Oh, okay. So, does this, does the city have to approve that as well then, since it's extraterritorial?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know, to be quite honest with you, but we'll let them know.
Do, do they, do they know, obviously, you know, what all of the, what we're requiring, so we can, uh, take care of those roads later, so we don't run into that issue?
Yeah, it says right on the permit.
Okay.
And Midland, Midland who doesn't do hardly anything anymore, is putting it in, so they'll do good, yeah.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to approve allowing that, uh, permit?
Right.
So.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to allow a permit for an approach on the north side around Chacon, two point eight mile east of Elk's Drive, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries.
And the last thing I have is, uh, the road mileage certification that we do every other year, we have, uh, gotten all paperwork, got all the townships, so. Uh, it's if they require the signature from the chairman.
So, I need a motion for the chairman to sign that.
Maybe, uh, a lot of chairman's side.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to have the chairman sign the township road pass certification, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries.
And all of you, if you have something you wanna add?
No, just a couple of things, I guess, so we have to sign, we're gonna have to back from the DOT, and the box cover on Chacon four on, uh, May second, and then, uh. Department of Engineers has to issue the four oh four printout, so they've got that in their court. And as soon as we get that back, we should be able to get that opened up, um, but we have to have that back in two months before the opening, so it'll be like tomorrow, but it'll be. Ground pretty quickly. Um, Ramsey County three, we have a pre-job with male construction next Tuesday at ten with DOT, um, that is on the schedule over, they're planning on setting signs up June first, with removals to follow. The handings, and then paving, June twenty seventh is your July first, and then the last of the striping should be done, uh, a month ahead of completion date, so. Uh, July seventh is their tentative completion date now, and then the contract completion date's August sixth, so it shouldn't impact harvest days.
Okay.
And then, uh, I guess related to the, the ER declaration, it would prevent two of the, from the federally roads, we need seven hundred thousand dollars damage in the Devil's Lake basin for to qualify it, and then there's because of statewide one as well. There's three other basins that goes on the back desk here. Um, so I think they're, are they looking for estimates for, I think you guys sent some of that stuff.
We didn't send the estimates for the emergency work, but not the permanent. And they had a, a statewide down me, easily, because they had a slide out, out west for seven million dollars or something. We just gave one for our district, our basin.
Yeah. And then, I guess, uh, the, uh, the flood map on the parcel deal was really nice, and the look, coming up, say, you could see the pictures of everything, and it was nicely coming out of that. Must be you and.
Chris doesn't fly.
Okay.
And Steve Moll.
Yeah, and Steve is putting it on the map.
Yeah.
Chris doesn't fly, and Steve puts it on the map, and.
That's both of them.
It was, it was, it was really useful when it was hot and heavy there for a while, and you didn't, I mean, things were closing quick, and. It was nice real quick to be able to look and go, okay, what's going on now, everything?
Yeah, no, it's really nice, it makes it clear for the public, if they're watching out there, click on the top of the Ramsey County website.
And there was a time, right, right after pre-closed, there was just, there was no way to get, and then we had all that rain that Saturday, there was no way to get across to the north end of the Cantone. On a, you know, four was a soup mess where all the gravel was and crap shakes, I almost had to send my in-laws around all the way to La Cota in north, because there was no way to get her home.
Yeah, if you've been on our, uh, parcel viewer, there's some awesome pictures of the little washout.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's gonna.
Yeah.
He's gonna come up close on that.
Well, when, when, uh, Tony went underwater, or had, that, I think Jeff shared that, that really good bit, you know, aerial people, what was going on. Yeah, it was, it was interesting. Okay, anything else? Or just, or if he gets a golden, if he can look at it.
Yep, yeah, he's.
I look at it, he's just jumping, he's taking care of it.
Yep.
And they're working in magic.
Yeah, yeah.
Big brother.
So, all the red dots are real close, and I'm sure there's a lot on there that aren't, over there.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's all kinds of township roads that.
Always.
Have been put on there.
So, we can see the little camera.
Yeah, that's some really useful information out there, so.
I'm looking through. Like, on, on real.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'll do it.
Yeah.
There was a video too, I think, yeah.
So, what are the, I guess, I haven't been on there for a couple of days, what are the blue lines then? That's where there's, where it must be wa, underwater?
Under, under water.
Completely water.
Wow.
Yeah.
See, a little ball out there.
Yeah.
And then, do you see?
You showed the backyard. Yeah, look at that.
Eight.
Yeah.
That's a baby one.
Yeah, that's a baby one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still be a little scary if you weren't paying attention.
Yeah.
Were these culverts froze, what caused it to do that?
I'm thinking, my theory is they found the frost line, and they had the head going, everyone of them had a head going, and they found that frost line, and then.
Yeah, probably, that's where all the.
Yeah. Yeah, that's three right there, isn't it? I'm amazed that three's in as good a shape as it was, considering how fast that water was coming over the top of the road, I thought that west, uh, west, uh. Inbank, in slope would be kinda easy, but it actually held in pretty good, since the grass is pretty good out there.
Oh, who's that? Where's ten?
From what is nine? Comes from nine.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The nine.
So, nine was just a twenty-four inch culvert, and that's under the hole, sure looks good. That's a, that's a culvert down inside the hole.
That's the end of the culvert, huh? Oh, man.
I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that the historical moment of precipitation in the upper basin. You know, we're trying to figure out the reasons why this happened, you know, and, and frost, and this and that.
There's four.
Yeah, and a lot of it is six to seven hundred percent normal precipitation.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, I know Greg Gust was working on, uh, presidential disaster declaration information, and, and, uh. He asked for my measurements, and it was just about seven inches of liquid precipitation between April first and May ninth.
Yeah, the average over that time would be maybe what, three quarter inch or?
Three quarters inch, maybe, maybe a little over an inch, you know?
That's just.
Yeah, so, and he's hearing that, was kind of reports from weather monitors all across the basin, so, you know. Really easy to see why.
And we've, we've really never had precipitation like this in, in April, I mean, very seldom this occur like this.
Oh, oh, nine, one of those years, um, you know, we had two inches of rain on frozen, frozen ground kind of thing, but not seven inches, you know?
Yeah, that's, those two are very busy, you know?
Well, it's good, it's all obvious.
Lots, lots of comments on, the, the website, the website.
That's been useful, people were good, good.
Good.
Well, that's, that's good that we have a good website we can look at.
The state, didn't he say the state shared some aerial pictures that they took?
Yeah, yeah, the aerials, pointing up, yeah, on there, DOT stuff.
Well, it's a good thing you want that, it's an attention too.
Yeah. Well, it's just good to have good documentation of all this too, because then you want, you gotta go back to the disaster declaration stuff, you've got all the documentation and pictures, and you can show this is what we're dealing with. It's pretty easy to make a justification real quick, yeah, you need a little help here.
Kind of like I say, when you take a picture of a hole, it all looks the same, if you get up in the air like that, it's like the hole in perspective.
Well, just the amount of water out there was just.
It's incredible.
I drove across twenty right before they closed it, or not closed it, before they, they were just pounding the side stakes, and when I was driving across it, as you could, as far as you could see, it was just water.
Yeah.
It's like driving across a, two inches across the mid, top of the lake.
Yeah.
It's crazy. On the plus side, at least it's flowing, at least right now, it's flowing now, we can kind of break. Okay, very good, anything else?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. All right, so we'll move into unfinished business, drug and alcohol testing policy, I believe there were copies on our desk.
Here, focus.
Let's talk about everybody's favorite topic, drugs, and when we test them. So, the old policy there for your, um, review as well. Bottom line is, the policy we had, um, was unconstitutional under, uh, Supreme Court decisions. So, we can do random, there's two different pools essentially, random drug testing and reasonable suspicion drug testing. Okay, we didn't do anything with the reasonable suspicion, if you have a reason to think that somebody is using drugs or is impaired, that stays the same. But for random, you can only randomly drug test people if they're either in the DOT pool, which means they have a CDL or operate machinery. Or if they're safety sensitive. I've read a lot of opinions and a lot of policies, and nobody has a great definition of safety sensitive, it's kind of.
Can I work these second one for you?
Kind of, yeah, pretty much, uh, bottom line is, if somebody, if they were distracted. Could cause harm to themselves or others, that's basically what a safety sensitive position is. Uh, we added a definition in there, we added a compliance statement, um. For purposes of this, it's right above testing guidelines, it says substance use testing, that's the bulk of where we added. Brian and I also cleaned up a few language spots, instead of saying supervisor, now it says supervisor or designated county employee, so. And that's mainly for small departments, so it's two-person department, supervisor, it says, ah, you're using drugs, let's go get tested. Now they don't have to shut down their whole department, somebody else can go on their behalf and coordinate that testing, so. You asked, and we answered, any questions about it?
The only question I have is, so, are, are public entities such as the county versus a private entity treated differently under the case law?
Yes.
Okay, because I've seen lots of private entities are still doing pre-employment drug screening and things like that, and they're within the law at that point, but we aren't, because we're a public entity.
Correct.
Interesting.
So, when you.
Why are they treated that way, right?
When you're a public government agency, different rules apply, that's basically what it comes down to, it's not a great answer.
But the, the fourth amendment's still the fourth amendment, not reasonable search and seizure, correct?
That's true, but when you work in a private business, you have the ability to run your business how you want.
Okay, we. Interesting, first time they're checked, and if they're positive, we can fire them?
They're subject to it, um, it leaves it open-ended on the policy.
Why?
Because there might be people who are tested that we don't want to fire right away, it, it just, it's a situation by situation. It gives, it gives the HR professional and the supervisor the ability to work out a plan, is basically what it comes down to. And I should say, anybody who's considered safety sensitive still gets drug tested before employment, so like.
So, we're gonna, you want us to pass something that has no teeth in it at all?
Uh, well, you have two options, you can have an unconstitutional policy and get sued by your.
Well, I understand that, but you want us to pass a policy that has no teeth in it, I said.
It's the same as it was, Ed, it, there's.
We were this, you know, we weigh all the time, not that much.
It's, if you look at paragraph five under testing guidelines, any refusal or positive test, you're subject to being terminated. Doesn't say you have to be terminated, because you can be.
Who, who has to make that determination, Nathan? Their supervisor or what?
Oh, yeah.
I would assume that they're supervisor, and if they, if they would want additional, if they're not, they would portfolio all the roads, so.
So, the next steps come in the commission.
Yeah, if, if they can't make a determination, I suppose.
These, uh, tests ever result in false positives?
I don't know, I don't know any of the background of the test.
Any of the background of the testing?
They split the tests, so if they have to, they can test it a second time.
Test it a second time?
Yeah, it's pure backup, so.
Can it be reportable?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably legal wise, it probably is, but the definition of safety sensitive, that's where I have to go. I picked up, and of course, you said there's no good definitions, so there we are.
My question is if there's, so did we define safety sensitive?
Yeah, it's in there, if you go to just above testing guidelines.
Okay.
I mean, just for instance, I mean, not, not picking on anybody, but if you handle millions of dollars every day, are you safety sensitive? Probably not, I don't know.
Correct, under, under the case law, you're not considered safely sensitive.
But, okay, you, wouldn't you want to know if your millions of dollars were disappearing, I'm just talking a lot of here.
Well, well, at that point though, I mean, it, that would fall, I would assume if some, if we had an office worker that essentially never drove a vehicle. Wasn't safety sensitive from that perspective, but they came to work, whether either on drugs or actively in a, you know, in that state. At that point, it's a reasonable, reasonable suspicion, and then we can test it. at that point, it's a reasonable suspicion, and then we can test anyway. Because if, I'm gonna pick on you.
Okay.
If Candy came to work and she was high on meth or something, I think you would see that. I would hope at least, and then there would be reason suspicion, suspicion to test, but. So, basically what's changing is, is that we can't pre-employment test unless they're safety sensitive.
Essentially, that's the bottom line.
And individuals that are not safety sensitive within the county, under our parameters, under our definition, will never get tested unless we have a reasonable, reasonable suspicion.
Reasonable suspicion, get in an accident, uh, drive a county vehicle, damage county properties, those are all testable.
Yes.
Things.
And, I mean, to me, under our definition of safety sensitive, anybody that could at any point in time drive a vehicle.
Correct.
Is safety sensitive, because they could cause injury or death to somebody in the public. So, anybody that could drive a county vehicle should get, be possibly tested randomly.
It, it gives us the ability to.
To do so.
And cases are all over the United States, they're kind of goofy. Things that have been upheld as safety sensitive include, you know, law enforcement, that's a big one, uh, payload operators, waste management people. But we've also seen it go the other way. Uh, sometimes janitors are considered safety sensitive because they work with chemicals or people who service, say, the roof, hot tar, you know, you kick a bucket of hot tar off the roof, that could be a bad day for somebody. So, it, it just, it's kind of nebulous, and we didn't put it, we didn't put everyone down the line because we don't necessarily want to hem ourselves in. We don't want somebody to look at the policy and say, oh, I can use drugs now. You know, we don't want it to go that way either, so. Probably sounds like a bunch of lawyer, uh, double talk, but.
Good that you said that.
I grew up in a blue collar household too, so I mean, I know that it doesn't make a lot of sense, but I'm also not on the Supreme Court, so I don't get to. Well, sorry.
You're all right with Kevin?
Yeah, I don't know how we'd change it to make any difference, to be quite honest.
Well, and at the end of the day, if, if, I would hope that our employees have an understanding that if we have, you know, we still have reasonable suspicion guidelines, so, and if, if we, all you have to do is document that reasonable suspicion, and if you document it and say, we need a drug test, and they refuse the drug test, at that point, there is the option of termination because they won't do the drug test. And it's on our ga, it's in our guidance, in our guidelines, correct, correct?
Yep, and just to put your mind at ease, Kevin, your department's, pretty much, every single person is subject to.
Oh, yeah, exactly, they all have CDOs, so, yeah, you don't have a question for mine.
You don't have task commissioner, do you?
Not unless you want me to. I don't test anybody. Well, what would we like to do? Would we like to pass tonight, or would we like to have a week, or two weeks to look at it, or what would we like to do?
When, when you're talking as powerful suspicion, what, what do you mean by that? Because that can go a long way too.
So, reasonable suspicion, in a legal world, that means something more than a hunch. So, I can't say, uh, plane's off today, let's test them, you know, did you stumble, did you, did I smell something, did you come late?
No different than like when the, the police officer pulled you over, they.
They need to have some reason to do it.
Same, basically the same rules.
Yep, same definition across.
And they have trained, I've been through training courses of helping you identify, like, paths or whatever.
And there's some health pill signs too. I think the reality is, we're probably not gonna have a lot of problems with the drug side of it, and it's more the alcohol side of it. That's where it's gonna pop up, you know, we went out and had a vendor last night, coming in and still coming down. Well, if I can smell it on you, that's reasonable suspicion. Done, but it can't, you're, you're trying to avoid saying, this is random, you're being tested, when it's not random. That's the goal. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, and I like the concept too of having some ability for the department head as well as the HR to work to try to figure out what to do. Simply because if it's a one-time occurrence where somebody did something and came in, we don't want to automatically throw the book at them necessarily. If they've been a quality, long-term employee and it was a one-time mistake, you know, let's work with them. Uh, if it's a consistent problem, well, then we know what has to happen.
Recharge or revenue?
Yep, and then also in there, I, just because you touched on it, it talks about employee assistance program to helping people get their situations in order and, basically, we're trying to do the right thing by everybody here. Basically, we almost have to do it, because after us.
I'll move to it, brother.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the updated policy, new policy for drug and alcohol-free workplace, which is number seven sixteen in the employee manual handbook, or we'd like to call it. Further discussion.
Questions, would you change the effective date to the seventeenth? We have to call, we can, we can do that. Okay.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, during vote for the discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Okay, new business, site authorizations, we have four of them, one in our packet and three on the desk.
Do good.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve all the site authorizations. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Raffle permits.
We should approve.
I'll second.
Okay, fit one. We have a motion in a second to approve the raffle permits, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Quotes from senior meals and services that was in the package.
Regular in place, right, Randy?
What's that? Yeah, that, that's the information that Kathy, that sends.
So, the scope of the project is brand new flooring in the washroom area and then original dishwashers?
Yeah. Put the four dollars and put in the dishwasher.
Is that, I think you said previously, isn't the dishwasher original to the facility?
Yeah, it's original.
Probably like forty-something. When, when was the facility open?
Uh, not sure.
The old dishwasher, is the old dishwasher still work?
Oh, yeah, it still works, but.
It's pretty well shot.
So, did they do this already?
No.
No, oh, not yet. No, because this is what.
Twenty-nine, six, oh, four, thirty-four would be the total, the total bid.
It says kitchen flooring, flooring.
And removal of stones, not looking at.
Removal of stones.
Hook up the, okay.
Yep, this is pretty much everything.
And flooring.
The commercial dishwasher is in the total flooring, that's actually not that bad. Plenty of money, but it's not unreasonable.
Yeah, I wouldn't grant a court.
Oh, good. Okay. Questions, I guess? Discussion.
Are we be looking to pay this out of that article money?
We were gonna take it out of, uh, our money, Randy.
The, the original part of it?
We, we have, um, since we had, um, who does all, um.
Oh, what is it? Pounder.
The foot care clinic thing?
Yeah, yeah, foot clinic, but we've, we've given some of that money to the senior meals here to function, to continue the foot clinic, but there is still money in there from, I don't know, from past.
Okay.
Like enough to cover?
There's eighty thousand five hundred dollars.
Well, that's good.
Well, we need to approve the.
So, you can either take it all out of there, you can take it half out of there, half out of COVID.
I just take it all out of there right now.
Yeah, whatever you want.
Well, because it's, you're doing a foot care right now, it was set aside for something like that, eh?
Okay, Jeff, you made a motion, you want to take it all out of that fund?
All of it, we just, we have more warranty here to go do some, we don't have any, no.
In the lobby, outside room, and that you pay a thousand, or ten dollars on that, so, that's kind of major as well.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, pay, what was it, twenty-nine thousand and change for.
So, so four.
So, so four to the, for the senior center, for the dishwasher room and renovation project out of the foot care clinic fund.
These are the state, they're very appreciative.
Further discussion.
We appreciate what they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a great service.
And I think what I'll have her do is, once she receives the bill, to just bring it to me and I'll kind of check it, because it might come in.
Okay, so do we want to do this as roll call, since the money's, or is just approving that expenditure?
Um, yeah.
What's another good dollar?
Yeah.
Maybe we.
Okay, we're, we're approving the, the overall bid idea and then we'll, we'll pay for it later once.
Yep.
Okay, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Portfolios and board appointments. So, do we have a, a specific list of what we need to do or not do, or?
Let me see, North Central Planning, oh, let me see, there's one more. Planning Commission hasn't met.
Okay.
Um, Reorganization and Annexation Board hasn't met. North Central Planning, she said their next meeting is June.
Okay, and they meet quarterly, correct?
Um, yeah, and she doesn't have a specific date yet, but she said she'll email me. Um, Lake Region Heritage Center, she just sent an email today that they have a meeting, um, next Wednesday.
What did you have a meeting, what time, January?
Um, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, at five-thirty.
So, it's a Wednesday, do they, do they generally stick to that schedule, or?
Um, no.
So, it's kind of just whenever they can make it work every day?
Yeah. And Dakota Prairie, that, they meet in July.
Yeah, they're quarterly as well. Okay, and that's, is that an indefinite appointment as well, or is that a term?
Nope. No, there's no term on that.
Okay. And that's, that's everything we have to fill in.
Yep.
For outside one, okay? Um, I guess, the question in front of the commission would be, do we want to fill those spots with current commissioners? Or do you, you know, how, how would we like to handle it, I guess? You know, there's gonna be one or two new commissioners. Or would, would Lisa like to be, take, take those on in the stand, or, we've got all kinds of options.
Lisa?
Well?
Obviously, I'm not gonna take any because I won't be here come December first, so.
Just to give an help.
Does it end? When you want me to take them or still?
If you, if you'd be willing to.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I will.
I think it's simple.
Okay.
I mean, because we're gonna have, I mean, once the commission, uh, has new members at that point, they're gonna, you're gonna, everybody, you're gonna have to reshuffle boards at that point anyway, so.
You're just talking about three men, right?
Uh, yeah, reorganization isn't gonna be, NCPC probably is only gonna meet once or twice before a new commission.
Which is sort of, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, but I will, I'll notify.
Dakota Prairie Community Action will only be a couple of meetings, probably, the, the one that'll meet the most will be the Heritage Center, everybody's gonna think they meet monthly.
And that, and that might fluctuate too with.
Okay.
Activities and whatever else she had going on over there.
Okay.
I didn't have that planned, but you seem like you were willing to.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, got it. Bye.
It only might be one meeting before the.
Yeah, that's quite possible, one maybe to the most, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna throw too much on you either, so.
No, that's fine.
That kind of thing, come on.
That's fine, that's fine.
Do we want a motion of the commission to do that, or?
Um, that'd be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to have, uh, what am I supposed to call you when you roll now? Should I, should I call you commissioner slash, slash treasurer, DESEF?
All right.
To, 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 to take those, uh, four boards temporarily, through the end, or until December first, I guess, it would be, or December, whenever the first meeting is. Okay, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, portfolios. Um, obviously, since I've slid over to the chair, uh, I've taken on, uh, the auditor, human resource emergency management, and VSO. Um, if it's fine with everybody, I'll, I could just take all the portfolio stuff, because I think it would be a little weird.
Yeah.
Obviously, you being a department head, having to oversee other department heads.
It would, and I just listen, not, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, I'll be more than, if it's fine with everyone, I can, I'll just take on the portfolios and just handle them if that's fine. Unless anybody for some reason wants to take one of the ones that I currently have, but otherwise, I'd be more than happy to handle it.
Did we, did we talk about the state's attorney falling under the chairman?
I, I think since I already have the state's attorney at this point, if, if, if portfolios want to be reshuffled come the new commission. Uh, we, we had, just, Bo had mentioned it to me as, as well as Candy, that maybe it would be reasonable at some point to have the state's attorney under the, under the chair, just because the state's attorney has so many things that have to run through the chair when it comes to the legal stuff, you know, like drug policy or almost anything. So, if, and the thought process was maybe, and, and the new commission, when it's seated, can make that decision, but maybe pull the, maybe like the inspection service or something and put it under the other, and just swap it state's attorney for VSO or something like that.
I just really wanna work with Brian next around, so.
There you go. Okay, uh, we need a motion for that as well, or since I'm just taking the, I'm just staying.
If you wanna have anything off, I mean, I only have those two, so I could take.
Well, if, if you'd like, I, I've been on highway department the whole time, so I'd stay there, but if you'd like to take county agent, that would be fine.
Okay, I'd go back on county agent.
Yeah, because you've been there before, so you couldn't, you'd no problem filling in. Okay, well, let's have a motion then, since we're making some changes, that, uh, that I would take auditor, human resource emergency management, VSO, uh, and stay on highway department, and the state's attorney, and then commissioner, probably be taken, county agent. We have a motion accordingly.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay, last on the new business that we have listed, approval of payment to Double Lake Cars for vehicle for the sheriff's departments.
This is one of the, uh, new patrol cars that Sheriff Nelson, it got approved almost a while back, it's, and, yeah, back in November.
You actually have it in hand now?
We, we have it in hand and Double Lake's car is it, obviously, but.
Yeah, it's a different.
Yeah, and Steve's still waiting on the other equipment for it and, and that kind of thing, but at least we have a vehicle. That stuff has been ordered a couple of months ago, and like everything else in this day and age, uh, it's been delayed with delays.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion to pay for the car, then?
I'd make a motion to pay for the car, to Double Lake Cars.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay Double Lake Cars thirty-six thousand, oh, fifty-six, for a twenty-two Dodge Durango for the sheriff's departments. Motion in a second, we have, correct?
Yes.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
I think we're paying for it, so we should.
Yep.
Yep.
Roll call.
Yep. Brown.
Aye.
Hulk. Brett? Brett?
Yeah.
DCEP, aye. Lightfoot.
Aye. Work hard, first time I did.
It's like, don't say the wrong name.
Okay, motion carries, okay, visitors and delegations. Crickets?
Crickets.
Crickets, announcements.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, uh this probably should have been added to the agenda. But I think recognition to our auditor and a big thank you uh from the commission to Candy for thirty years of dedicated service to Ransfield County. So.
I think the real question is, how did you get a job here when you were like seven years old?
Yeah.
Thirty years.
Yeah.
Thirty years, thirty years old.
Oh.
No.
You qualify for the rule of eighty-five, okay?
Yeah.
So you only have, what, five, six years?
I don't qualify yet.
Yeah, yep, thirty years today, fifty years old tomorrow.
Thirty years older than that tomorrow, all the way to tomorrow, okay?
We're supposed to say that, no, you're gonna say hammer, remember that?
It's okay, it's okay.
Good job, but I think some recognition is well deserved.
Totally agree.
Thank you for all your hard work, thank you.
So Candy, I don't know how we keep our heads on straight sometimes.
I don't know how I do my head.
Lots lots of notes.
Uh huh.
Hope you have some note taking.
Uh huh.
I always joke with everybody and I say that if the building burns down, I'm never coming back like this.
I got notes for everything.
All on all in paper, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one question, like, were you in law enforcement, were we supposed to do anything with this?
No, she just, she um she already paid it, so it's just to, it was like you.
Did we pay it on the first meeting of the month?
No, it came later.
We're gonna pay it next meeting, it's just for informational purpose, okay?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, she wanted to shock us.
I guess, yeah.
Shocking.
No, it actually wasn't that bad, you know.
You know, runs, hit your nap.
Yeah, it does.
I do have one other thing.
Yes.
I end up uh talking to Ellen McKay and talking to him about doing on that human resource stuff. He did ask a question on, once a job's closed, if a job got readvertised, how they want to hire another.
Okay.
Change the way it's set up or, you know, cuz before, how they did it, is it gonna be the same people to do, or he just asked that question, are we waiting for a closure when that group gets decided or?
Well, I would.
I just wanna know, cuz he asked me.
I would assume since you're a representative on that board now, that if they would like to have you on the hiring committee, that's how it would be handled, of course, yeah.
Sure, I had a question, there's under commissioner and the other guy.
Yeah.
Okay, just so you guys are aware, and he did ask.
But if, yeah, previously, yeah, yeah, I I think that would, if if they want you on the hiring committee, of course, yeah, we'd like to have a representative there, obviously, so.
Just so you guys are aware.
Yeah, of course. Okay, very good, anything else for the good of the order?
Yeah, one one thing that I wanna mention, just put in the back of your minds, these steam disasters usually last about three years. That's how many years I got left, so.
Can't leave them all done.
Yeah, can't leave it till they're done.
I'm I'm leaving at the right time, is that for you?
You started the cake, now you gotta finish it.
I don't know, man, just try to get somebody involved, Chris or somebody else, just around. Just it's not over by the time I leave or something like that.
Some keep somebody in, you like, yeah, keep somebody in a loop so that at least we have some continuity in case it takes that long to be a buy.
And didn't you start in a big fumery? Yes.
You gotta get the deep end of the pool, like.
Yes, yeah.
Where did you start?
Ninety-seven.
That cycle lasted your whole career?
Yeah.
What were you thinking?
So what you're telling me is it's gonna get dry again in three years?
I'm hoping.
Maybe you brought the water.
Uh, yeah, one more disaster's enough for me.
Ninety-seven's the only winter that I remember that was popular, this one.
Yeah, yeah, winters, yes. A lot of winters, started in early that year.
Yeah, two or three times, once snow.
Yeah, I remember the snow in ninety-seven.
There was five feet of the.
Yeah.
Pushed rocks. Yeah, but I I guess I could, you know, our meeting with the outlet advisory committee, uh we could go, um, wind fine, I mean, it went as expected. Uh, you know, the uh state does plan on turning pumps on as soon as, as soon as uh conditions allow it down the Cheyenne. And the Red River, I think there's gonna be a race to go before that happens, looking at how full those, both those rivers are, so, um. But I think everybody was in a in agreement, I think the water commission has a meeting on being seventh in Bismarck. Where they themselves will will finalize that, but um the committee members that were present and those online were. All in agreement that we're seeing record inflows and and uh you need to turn on when conditions are low, so. And just some rough estimates, we will probably see a surpass of of the twenty-eleven influence as we continue. Um, which I didn't think I'd ever ever see again, but um, you know, that was just about six hundred thousand acre feet of water flowing into the lake. And I'm thinking that we will, we will surpass that this year by probably substantial amount. I, eleven, nine, ninety-seven were our record years and they were all fairly close in that five hundred fifty thousand range to close to six hundred thousand range. This one's gonna surpass them all and I think it's all because of that precipitation, you know, and we had. Had three, four hundred percent precipitation normal uh um September through uh November last year and then. And then, you know, we have this winter and then, you know, obviously, April was the straw that tore the camel's back, so. Just an effort, and water tour, if anybody wants to come on it, we'll uh schedule that, we have that scheduled for June fifteenth and Wednesday. Starting out with the Hasta Lake Center, we'll go around the lake all day and. And all commissioners, legislators and public is welcome to attend. We have a fifty, fifty-five person motor coach that we, all people round in.
You're gonna have to check, check their road closure map before you take off.
Well, I I was out trying to drive my tour route this morning and that's.
Pretty good.
There's some adjustments that I need, but um, motor coaches don't do well on soft gravel roads, so.
One, everything's still gonna be probably fairly soft.
Yeah, I gotta see, experiment a great deal in in a month's time, so.
Just one of those springs.
A lot of blacktop and unfortunately, uh you can see some things from the blacktop around the Double Lake Basin, but. And really, maybe radio is on the backroads, um but uh and serving the drone, uh Chris and, you know, everybody else that's got these drones out there is providing some absolutely fantastic. Uh flood flood coverage, so we appreciate those guys, but fifteenth of June, Double Lake Basin water tour, run your calendars.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, anything else? Seeing nothing? Ready a motion again, I always forget, I'm just gonna.
No, you can.
We are here.